This candidate forum is being conducted by the League of Women Voters, Jackson Area. The League is a nonpartisan organization. We do not support any candidate or political party. The League encourages informed and active participation by citizens in all local, state, and national elections. This candidate forum will be added to the LWVJA website and the LWVvote411.org website. M-Live will be notified when the forum is loaded on the websites. The address for the websites will be on the final slide after the forum. The League of Women Voters, Jackson Area, will be circulating print copies of Vote 411 throughout Jackson County, including all Jackson District Library locations. National and state election information will be in the print edition. All local election information will be on the website. No part of this recorded forum may be used without the express written permission of the League of Women Voters, Jackson Area. No part of this forum may be used by the candidates or their staff for any purpose other than directing their potential constituents to the aforementioned sites for viewing. Our moderator for this candidate forum is Mrs. Gwen Tab.
League of Women Voters, Jackson Area Candidate Forum. My name is Gwen Tab, and it is my honor to be the moderator for this forum. The candidates for the Jackson County Commission District 7 election are Mr. Jeremy Alexander and Mr. John Willis, and we thank you for your participation. Let me review the basics of the format for this candidate forum. Candidates are asked to speak only of themselves and their ideas with no disparaging comments, remarks about their opposing candidates or others. Time will be kept by a member of the League of Women Voters of Jackson Area. You will be alerted by a charm at time at 15 seconds remaining and at the end of one minute. You will be allowed to end your sentence and are expected to stop at that point. As the moderator, I will interrupt a candidate who exceeds the time limit. Each of you will have one minute for your open, open and closing statements as well as one minute to answer each question. The opening statement will start in alphabetical order and the closing statement will be in reverse. The order of questions will also alternate. If you need me to repeat a question, I will do so. This candidate forum will be recorded on the Zoom platform. Candidates are asked to manage your muting and unmuting yourselves as you answer the questions and complete answers. Mr. Alexander, please take one minute for your opening statement.
Thank you, Gwen, and thank you to the League of Women Voters who have organized this forum. I certainly appreciate the opportunity to be here, and I'd like to thank you, Mr. Willis, for joining me here. I do appreciate that. As for myself, I've been a Jackson resident for, gosh, in the county for 44 years now. My whole life has been here in Jackson County. I've lived in the city since 2000, excuse me, 1995, so I think I'm about 25, 26 years in the city. Raised two children. I've ran my business here in the city. For the last four years, I represented the city in Ward 3 on the Jackson City Council. And for about the last year, I've represented District 7, the east side of the city of Jackson, and for part of Summit, on the county commission. And I'm running for reelection so that I can continue serving my neighbors and my Jackson area. Thank you.
Mr. Willis, please take one minute for your opening statement.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. First of all, thanks to the League of Women Voters for having us here, and to Jeremy for being here. I appreciate this opportunity. For those that don't know me, my name is John Willis. I am running as a candidate for Commissioner for the 7th District. Most of you will know me from being at Martin Luther King Center for about 20 years. Over the past, over that time, I've built a lot of relationships. I learned a lot of things about our community. I was able to see a lot of family needs and things that needed to happen. As a result of that, I've had the opportunity to grow and grow in what I do. For the past 26 years of working with the city, working with communities, I've avoided the political end of the spectrum because I didn't think it was something that I wanted to get into. But as I became more involved, more involved deeply in our community, I realized that there's a need for someone with my perspective, for someone with my insight, to be able to work for this community to help achieve the things that we want to achieve. So that is what I'm running for. That is what I'm looking forward to doing. I look forward to doing my best to continue to serve the communities that we serve in the past and the communities that are in that 7th District Commission.
Mr. Alexander, please describe your background, including educational achievements, work history, and how long you've lived in Jackson County.
I guess I could have kept all of that out of my intro then. All, like I said, I've lived in Jackson County my entire life. I've lived in the city again since about 95. I attended Columbia Central High School, and I've taken some classes at the college over the years. One of these days, I'll get a degree, life goals. Apart from that, I've also worked as a skydiving instructor for the last four years. I received my AFI rating in 2011 and 2018. I think I've got somewhere near 2,000 professional skydives. This year, I'm taking a year off of skydiving. Obviously, I was injured in an accident earlier this year, and so I've just been focusing on my recovery there over this year. I think my perspective growing up in Jackson has given me a unique view. I began, met just thousands of people over the years. I worked for St. John's Church for a number of years and met a lot of the families there. But really, just living in Jackson on the east side, knowing what my family's gone through, knowing what a lot of other families and my position are going through, I think I've got a really good idea of what I can do to help the Jackson area.
Mr. Willis, please describe your background, including educational achievements, work history, and how long you've lived in Jackson County.
Well, I've been in Jackson County. I think we moved here in 1980, somewhere, somewhere around that time. I know I was in high school, so it's been quite a while. Been in Jackson a long time. Education, if I told you all the colleges that I attended and dropped out of, I'd probably take the rest of the evening. But I ended up being a non-traditional student, started out taking some classes, Eastern Michigan, came back Jackson College, Detroit Institute of Technology. It was the University of Phoenix where I was able to establish and complete what I needed to do educationally in 2003. From that point, I actually went into a master's coaching certificate program from Drake University. So that's educationally how I built my background. The thing that most important about my education is that it taught me how to, it taught me how to say what needed to be said, and it gave people a different perspective of me. But nothing that I've accomplished educationally has meant as much to me as what I've learned, as living in the community and working with families and seeing things that families go through every day. So my greatest education is being right here in the city of Jackson, working with families, watching young people grow up, watching young people go through the challenges and struggles every day that people have to face in challenged communities. Those are the things that have educated me the most. Those are the lessons and the values in life that helped shape my life and the part of work that I do for this community.
Mr. Willis, why are you seeking a seat on the Jackson County Commission? If you are an incumbent, why are you seeking reelection?
I'm seeking a seat. This is my first political office I've actually ever sought, and the reason that is, is again, having worked with our community for as long as I have and having a better grasp now of what goes into improving communities, what goes into challenged communities, what do challenged, challenged communities, what do challenged families and students need to be successful. Having a better understanding of how funds come into the city, how those things are dispersed, a lot of things even outside of just how funds are dispersed in terms of decisions that are made, a local legislation that is drawn up, and how it affects different communities, how some policies, even though unintentional, they could be racially invidious policies, they could be policies that affect certain groups desperately. Having a better understanding of that, having a better understanding of how relationships are important in governing, being able to walk across an aisle, being able to communicate with people that may not be able to communicate with other people from like perspectives, like backgrounds, is very important to me. I've learned that the expertise that I have, if I use it properly, I can get some things accomplished for our community. That's what I'm looking forward to doing. That is the only reason, the only reason at all I have any interest in running for a job as Commissioner.
Mr. Alexander, why are you seeking a seat on the Jackson County Commission? If you are incumbent, why are you seeking reelection?
Thank you. I am seeking reelection. I've enjoyed my service over the last four years with the city council and now over the last year with the county commission. I enjoy learning how our government works, and I enjoy explaining how our government works to my neighbors. I think that's the one biggest thing that I've really done over the last five years is when somebody has an issue, well, you listen to the issue and then you help them understand it. A lot of people that have issues that might be with a city ordinance, it might be with a county policy, it might be an issue with a state law, but a lot of people don't understand where to take the next steps. So one of the things that I find that where I provide a lot of value is simply listening to people and helping them understand which level of government is causing the issue that they have in front of them. A lot of times, it might be a city problem, but a person might show up to a county commission meeting or vice versa. So I think helping, helping people understand how the system works and then finding ways that we can make the system work better for each and all of us is something that I find very important to me, and it's one of the reasons where I've gone from the city now into the county to help learn myself and understand all the different functions of our government at the various different levels.
Mr. Alexander, why are you, oops, sorry. Mr. Alexander, County Commission's Board are responsible for Jackson County budget. What experience do you bring to operating, to preparing and making decisions about the Jackson County budget?
Well, a budget, whether it's for Jackson County or for the city of Jackson, a budget is, well, it's the same everywhere. The most important things are, you've got to make sure that you keep your spending in check. You can't spend more than you receive, and you've got to be able to make decisions about the future of the maintenance and the infrastructures and make those good decisions going forward. A lot of the experience I have there is, one, running my own business, and again, top line and bottom line, you're just always trying to make that maximum profit. Also, running my budget as a family, simply knowing that sometimes there's things you want, you know, maybe you want to repair the driveway, but maybe the electrical system's a higher priority. You know, simply understanding the priorities is really important. Thirdly, it's listening to the experts that we have, especially at the county commission. We have our study sessions where we have access to the entire county staff to help answer the questions so that we can make intelligent and informed decisions between the various funds that are there.
Mr. Willis, County Commission Boards are responsible for the Jackson County budget. What experience do you bring to preparing and making decisions about the Jackson County budget?
For the, for the past 20 years as Director of Martin Luther King Center, you started to learn what, what fiscal responsibility looks like in terms of municipalities and how they operate. I've been able to work closely with our department heads initially on the budgets that we had, things we had to work with, and to learn why things go where they go, why things have to go in certain pots. How do you decipher between decisions that have to be made that may seem imminent or immediate versus the things that you have to do long-term, infrastructure-wise, to set up, to be successful, the things that your city will need to do. Over the past five years, being downtown, at City Hall, I've been able to work hand in hand with a lot of different department heads, with our city managers that we've had, and to see how fiscal planning works efficiently. How do you look at things? How do you determine what you have to do infrastructurally? How do you determine what needs to be done? How do you make those decisions? And from a home perspective, raising a wife and 10 kids, if you don't, if you don't learn how to be fiscally responsible, you'll have a higher fall grade.
Mr. Willis, what departments in Jackson County do you feel are most concerning, be it budget or other issues, and what do you feel needs to be done to resolve these issues?
Well, for me, the, obviously, your budget is going to be the deciding factor in almost everything that you have. But there are some pressing issues to me that are always of most concern. One of the things that I know from talking to some of the county commissioners is that a large part of the mental health, mental health operations that we have here in the city of Jackson, these things go through, through the county. So a lot of the work that's being done, a lot of things are already in process in terms of their, in terms of seniors, seniors care. I've worked with a lot of seniors in the community that have some concerns about how things are being done with seniors. So I think the things that are affecting people, people's lives, most importantly, are the things we have to address, as well as maintaining the structures, the roads, the other things that the counties have to do. It's important for me to be able to be into those study sessions and see what we're seeing and make sure that we're making decisions that make our county more equitable for everyone involved.
Mr. Alexander, what departments in Jackson County do you feel are most concerning, be it budget or other issues, and what do you feel needs to be done to resolve those issues, those concerns?
Thank you. Well, the budget really isn't a department rather that's what controls every single law department throughout the county. So of course, we set the budget properly and then just make sure all departments follow their budget, or at least know why they didn't throughout the year. However, to answer your question, the individual departments, one that I look at especially is the Health Department. The Health Department has a lot of focuses, but two of the programs are really important to me to see be successful, and that is the Drug Prevention Program that Jackson County runs, as well as the Team Pregnancy Prevention that Jackson County runs. Those are two programs that, again, prevention is so much cheaper than solving these problems once they develop. So I think those are really important, and they can actually make a really positive life difference in the residents of our county. Secondly, right now, although the department runs very well, our Sheriff's Department, the Sheriff's Department runs very well, but we've got some infrastructure issues, so we are solving those infrastructure issues and to keep the taxes down. Lastly, emergency and 911 is extremely important in our county. That's why we're doing what we can to emphasize that with having our 911 handle medical calls now. Thank you.
Mr. Alexander, what do you feel are the top two concerns facing the whole of Jackson County, and how do you see resolving those concerns?
Wow. The top two problems facing the whole of Jackson County. One, you know, it's hard to put your finger on this one, but I'm even going to say maybe even a mental illness, or over the last two years, we saw a lot of issues with the pandemic. People were staying inside, not getting along, not talking to each other. We saw a lot of just lack of civility in our world, perhaps, lack of kindness. And I think maybe it was from the pandemic, people just not spending enough time with each other. But I think, just as a whole, I think if we just spent more time with each other, you know, get along better. You know, it's really hard to put any kind of a goal or measurement on that other than what I do. I try to put my kindness out in the world, and hopefully that makes a difference. But as far as problems experiencing the entire county, you'd have to say money. Everyone could use more money, and when it comes to the county, we expect our county to be fiscally conservative and to make sure that our county can stay as low as possible for each and every resident. Whether they're in the outskirts of the county or if they're here in the city, we want to pay less taxes. That is 100% universal, and it's my goal to make sure that every penny in taxes we do pay is returned with a very great efficiency and service.
Mr. Willis, what do you feel are the top two concerns facing the whole of Jackson County, and how do you see resolving those concerns?
I think the number one thing that I see personally for, for the county that is a huge first thing for me, my interest is the community mental health. Right now, we spend a lot of time working with people that are, that are either homeless or the people that are in need of mental health care that they're not receiving at this time. And I know we have a great mental health care program, and our goal is, one of the things we have to do is find out how do we tie this, tie these people together? How do we tie together the people that have the need and the people that have the service? I think to me, that is one of the, one of the number one things we have to do. The second thing is, how do we as a county, how do we recover from the pandemic? There are a lot of families that suffered a lot of different shortages and crises during this pandemic. And now, as we're starting to come out, workforce development, different things like that, we're seeing a lot of needs that need to, need to be made to help us recover from that pandemic.
Mr. Willis, what are the top two concerns that residents in District 7 have told you they want you to help them resolve?
A lot of, a lot of the people that I'm, that I'm hearing from definitely have concerns over jobs that are paying a living, a living wage, where work, where people can earn an income that would help them take care of their families. That's one of the things that we hear a lot. I know the county has done some things with workforce development in the past. We're definitely interested in being a part of that type of, anything to do with the workforce development and to help families improve their lives, working. And the other things is, again, I'm hearing from a lot of seniors. You said that the medical health, there's a lot of seniors whose lives are being touched in a lot, a lot of different ways. So to be engaged in that, I'm hearing from these seniors about things that need to happen in the community, things that they would like to see. So I don't want to stand on the outside and make a judgment on how, how this is this way, or why this is this way, when I don't know the full financial scope of it. But those are the two things that I'm hearing the most about right away.
Mr. Alexander, what are the top two concerns that residents in District 7 have told you that they want you to help them?
Yeah. Well, as I've gotten out and talked to a lot of the residents, the two most common things that come up are, one, the roads. Everyone across Jackson County and probably across the entire state of Michigan or the entire nation, everyone wants better roads. And one of the things that I've had to help explain, and this has been part of my privilege, is to help people understand what roads are, are, the city is responsible versus roads that the county is responsible versus roads that the state is responsible for. So again, just helping understand, it's really easy to say, I want this fixed, but knowing which office you need to go to handle that is really important. Beyond the roads, money. Everyone wants to pay less taxes. Right now, we've got two ballot issues coming up on the ballot this November, so everyone has questions about why are we, why are the commissioners asking them to vote yes on a tax? Helping people understand that we do have to pay taxes, but the goal is that we get the maximum benefit for those taxes. You know, to have one millage to get something that we need is, it's simply the way we have to buy something that we need. And the current situation that we have with the jails, we need a new.
Mr. Alexander, public transportation continues to be an issue of concern throughout the county for those who need it for work, shopping, and education. How will you support transportation funding for the countywide residents who rely solely on public transportation?
Well, as a person that spent a good portion of this year relying on public transportation, I can tell you how absolutely important it is. Riding on the JADA buses for the first four or five months was the only way I was able to get around. So it really is important and for a thousand different reasons. But luckily, here in the county, we do have the JADA system. We also have the Dial Ride System. We have medical ride systems. It is so absolutely essential that from the county perspective, it comes down to a budgeting system. You know, there's a little bit of the budget that the county puts towards JADA. Of course, I'd be in support of that. More importantly, I think the bulk of the JADA budget comes from a millage themselves, which was actually just on the August ballot, and it did pass. And there was something else that was supported. And again, as you're talking to people, everyone wants to pay less taxes, and so it's really important that we are able to explain, when is it, when do we want to have that yes on the ballot? When do we want to choose to spend more taxes? And to support a service like JADA is the reason we want to do that. Public transportation is something that everyone in the county needs, and it's something that we're doing everything we can to provide the best, most great system we can.
You're muted, Ms. Tab.
I'm so sorry. Let's try that again. Public transportation continues to be an issue of concern throughout the county for those who need it for work, shopping, and education. How will you support transportation funding for the countywide residents who rely solely on public transportation?
For me, transportation to me is very personal. Before, while I was going back to school, I was a bus driver for seven years. After that, I was a transportation supervisor for Jackson Transit. So first of all, we have a great relationship with the transit system that we have, and we have some communication and some experience and knowledge there. I think most fiscal municipality units, governing units like the county, you, they're data-driven. They're data-driven. So I think a big thing that we have to do is come up with the data to show what are our county needs in transportation. I work with Jackson College on a regular basis. I see students that live in the county that don't have transportation to get to where they go, where they need to go. I hear from people all the time that don't have the transportation to get where they need to go in the city from county areas or get out to county areas from the city. So I think we need to come together, find out what the data is, find out what the data supports. Let's have a conversation with our transportation authorities, with our powers that be, to figure out what is that, what is it that we can do? Yes, there are some fiscal restraints, like keeping people doing everything that we want to do, but what's the most important, and what can we get done? Let's find the data to support that.
Mr. Willis, across the country, boards of many communities are in, are becoming involved with banning of books in schools and libraries. Please explain your position for or against regarding banning of books. Should that, that subject ever be brought before the county commission?
Yes, we do see this quite, quite frequently nowadays. And unfortunately, our country has become so polarized by, by groups, by political groups with agendas. My personal belief is, we have an education system. We have authorities in those systems that are experts in that field. Let them do their jobs. Let them, let them make the decisions that need to be made. Let's keep politics away from things that politics don't need to be involved in. We've had a lot of, a lot of problems in our past. We've had problems even more recently, that, that pit one group, one nationality, one political organization against another. We, that should not be the job of our county commission. Our county commission should be to do the work of the county commission. We have school boards that have great leaders, people that are experts in that field. Allow them to do their job, and let the county stay where the county needs to be, and let those schools do what they need to do. And that should not be banning books that are, that have accurate information.
Mr. Alexander, across the country, boards of many communities are becoming involved with banning books in schools and libraries. Please explain, explain your position for or against regarding banning of books that should, should that ever become, that subject be brought before the county commission?
Thank you. Interesting question. I didn't see this one coming. If anyone ever asked me if I'd be willing to ban a book, absolutely not. Knowledge is power. I think everyone should read, 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 read. Now, when it comes to the content of some books, well, you might have to ask your parents if you're allowed to read that, and your parent may or may not want you to read Animal Farm or something else. But as far as banning books at the governmental county level, absolutely not. I couldn't even imagine the thought of it. As far as a school board, certainly they're going to make a decision on what is or isn't included in that library. But as far as actually banning books countywide or something, absolutely not. I couldn't even imagine it. And if anyone across, anyone listening to this is in the situation of dealing with a book ban, I want you to know that if you actually go to BKLYNlibrary.org, that is the Brooklyn Library of New York, and they have online memberships where you can actually read any book ever, regardless of whether your location is banded or not. Go online to the Brooklyn Library of New York and read, learn. Thank you.
Mr. Alexander, what do you believe are the top two infrastructure concerns in Jackson County, and how do you see resolving them?
As far as the biggest infrastructure concern in Jackson County, one, I'm just going to say globally, roads, 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 roads. Everyone wants better roads. We need better roads. But again, that is a, an issue of like four different municipalities, and for the, for the majority of it, it's not the county. The county does a lot of road work, but that's when we're contracted to do that road work by the various townships. So as roads are that number one issue, explaining how roads are fixed in that system is really important on every conversation I have at the doors. Understanding the system, letting somebody learn it. Secondly, the biggest thing facing Jackson County, gosh, I would actually say the mischener disaster right downtown Jackson. That mischener plating plant was there for 100 and some years. It is now on the Superfund National site. It'll take billions of dollars to clean up the potential damage, and with its location in the Grand River, this has the potential to be an ecological disaster. We're working on the processes to get the major amount of funding to fix that. But as far as a number one problem, yeah, mischener plating.
Mr. Willis, what do you believe are the top two infrastructure concerns in Jackson County, and how do you see resolving them?
John, you're muted.
Thank you, thank you. I actually said I agree with Jeremy on that, Jeremy. You Thank you, thank you. I actually said I agree with Jeremy on that. Jeremy, you probably, we didn't need to hear that, but I agree with Jeremy that roads are are something that hugely concern a lot of the the citizens, citizens and residents of of our county. Uh, unfortunately, there there are a lot of um misunderstandings on what constitutes a road that the county takes care of versus a road that the city takes care of, versus a road that's a state trunk line and different things like that. So having some knowledge, maybe getting some of that information out to the public and addressing the road and infrastructure things that the county can address, I think that's of major importance. And the other thing I think of major importance, infrastructure-wise right now, would have to have to be the Jackson County Jail. If anyone has had an opportunity to to visit or to tour that facility, see the condition of the facility, the condition that is that is operating under, that is something that the county needs to take a a serious look at, make a serious investment and bring that to a, to a condition that that is satisfactory for those in it and those that's working at it.
Mr. Willis, as a commissioner, how will you support the necessary infrastructure changes in preparation for the future increased use of electric, electric vehicle usage? Would you support replacing county fleet vehicles with electric vehicles?
What I, what I would support is to the the study and information to make sure that the decision that we're making is a proper decision. I think it's very important for not only that the the city, that the county as well, we start to look at how we can become a a greener county. How 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 do we save energy? How do we help reduce our carbon footprints and things that are happening in in our county? So I think to to just to jump on and say, yes, I support a switch over to electric vehicles. I would like to see what what that, what those numbers look like. I would like to be a part of those study sessions to see what's best for our county. If that, that serves our county best and that helps our environment better than one hundred percent. If it helps our environment and it can help us save some money, then I think that's something that we have to take a look at.
Mr. Alexander, as a commissioner, how will you support the necessary infrastructure changes in preparation for future increased use of electric vehicle usage? Would you should, oh, excuse me. Would you support replacing older county vehi- fleet vehicles with electric vehicles?
Well, when it comes to electric uh vehicles, as well as any other new technology, there's two ways to look at this. One, as far as the county administration, so speaking literally to the uh the five hundred employees and the properties that the county owns. As far as our fleet of vehicles, when the administrator comes to me and says that it will be cheaper to do it with vehicle B rather than vehicle A, I will support vehicle B rather than vehicle A. As far as what vehicles our administrator wants to have in the fleet are definitely uh within his purview, and as long as the dollar and cents add up, I will be there. Secondly, the second way I want to answer this question is when we talk about Jackson County, as far as all the constituents and all the businesses and all the people in Jackson County, do we, the people of Jackson County, want to switch to electric? Well, some of us do. Go buy one. Um, the businesses, uh, do you want your customers to be able to charge their cars at your location? Uh, business might go ahead and then support those. I think those are individual private decisions, but as far as my decision at the county level, whatever's cheaper is what I'm gonna go vote for.
Mr. Willis, please take one minute to make a closing statement to residents in District Seven.
Uh, my closing statement will be that, first of all, I'm I'm a proud resident of of District Seven. Uh, it 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 means a lot to me. My interest in this job, my interest in this position is simply because I understand the situations that I, that is facing this community. I understand some changes that need to happen, and I also believe that I have the relationships and experience that that's needed to bring about that change that needs to happen here. We started out doing some, some really, really great things here within the city. My job as chief equity officer from the city has made me aware of a lot of those changes and things that happen. Working in this position with the county would allow me to work with other county commissioners, with other uh county department heads to help finish achieving the things that we've started to achieve to make the District Seven a better district. That's what I believe I'm capable of doing. That's my purpose for being here.
Mr. Alexander, please take one minute to make a closing statement to residents in District Seven.
Thank you. Well, like I said, I've lived in the city for the last twenty-five years, but in the fifteen years that I grew up, I did grow up out in the county areas. Uh, Michigan Center area, Columbia, Brooklyn, Park Lake, and then the last twenty-five years here in the city. I think the most important thing is to realize the differences between the county and the city and to realize that our city is at its strength when it is a strong part of a strong county. Um, to that end, we have to make sure that we are always focusing on county issues um and as far as District Seven relates to those. Um, it is really easy, and I see this at the doors all the time, as a District Seven representative, I am representing county issues. And although there are a vast number of issues in the city, um, those are not the issues that I have the ability to deal with. You know, in those respects, I get to reach out to my previous colleagues to uh manage to issue it over. Um, so like I said, I think the most important thing is that um having a knowledge of what goes on at the city, having a knowledge of what goes on at the county and helping uh constituents understand the difference and understand how we can make our county strongest by making sure we have a strong District Seven.
This concludes our candidate forum. Again, we are grateful for your participation and believe that your intended constituency will be grateful as well. Thank you.
We hope that you will vote in person on November eighth or contact your clerk's office to obtain an absentee ballot. The League hopes that all Jackson County citizens will vote in this upcoming general election.